Real property negotiations, we gave a status report on negotiations concerning the spa hotel. No action was taken. Concerning the matter on Burnett Companies, the matter was not discussed. The real property negotiations with Bill Barron in the Palm Canyon area, we gave a status report, no action was taken. Concerning real property negotiations on the visitor's center with Fred Els, we gave a status report, no action was taken. Concerning the convention center, it was not discussed. Concerning real property negotiations with the school district concerning the airport property, we gave a brief status report, no action was taken. Concerning real property negotiations with Jim Ruddy concerning the general store in the Village Green, we have a status report, no action was taken. Concerning the golf course hotel project, the matter was not discussed. Desert Water Agency versus City of Palm Springs, litigation matter was not discussed. Exposure litigation, we did discuss exposure litigation in one case, no action was taken. We did not discuss the second matter. We did not discuss initiation of litigation and there was no city attorney evaluation.
Thank you. Counsel, excuse me. Public comments on matters within the jurisdiction of the entities? Anyone would like to speak? Sharon, welcome. Sure. You have three minutes. See if I can work this.
My name is Sharon Locke. I live at 2961 Cayer Arandis, Palm Springs. I'm here to talk about the utility tax. Would have been here sooner, but I've been out of town. I'd like to propose that perhaps you look at an alternative method of dealing with this, an alternative to these drastic cuts that we're talking about and spending $125,000 of money to educate me and the rest of the people in Palm Springs. My proposal is very simple. It's this. If the tax is repealed, that's November of 2002, it does not take an effect till the new budget cycle of November, I mean July 2003. That's a nine-month window. It seems to me that within a nine-month window, we could amass some citizens with a blue ribbon advisory committee to take a look at this budget, to tear it apart with staff, to go over it inch by inch, and find out why it's costing us $10 million more to run our city. I'm not saying that, you know, we should make drastic cuts now, but let's step back and let's take an evaluation. Now, I've been in budget problems and cuts before as well. And I know a lot of times that you can identify cost-reduction programs that take a year or two years to realize those benefits. Well, in July of 2003, we have an election in four months. Now, if you have a citizens advisory group that has looked at it and said, "Well, you know, we can get $2 million or $3 million, but it's going to take us two years to do that. Let's put it back on the ballot. Let's take it back to the voters and say, 'Look, we have spent nine months studying this,' or five months, or four months. We can make these cost-reduction plans. We can do these programs, but it's going to take two years.' Put it back on the ballot and say, 'All right, we'll have a 2-2 program. We're going to have two years where we're going to have a 2 percent utility tax, and at that point it ends.'" You know, we have what we have as an emergency tax or a gap tax, but it's not tied to anything, and the problem is it's open-ended. There's no end in sight to it, and I think that is an issue that we have with taxation. Special taxes or gap taxes should actually be reevaluated every three to five years and should go back to the voters. And I don't think, if we have really good reasons and we've looked at the budget in depth, and there are two years it takes to implement it, I really don't think we'd have a problem with an initiative on the ballot in the next election. So I really would urge you to at least think about it. Save the $125,000 and walk away from some of these cuts. Thanks.
Anyone else like to speak? If not, we will close public comments. Counsel comments, questions, or reports? You notice I'm looking at Ron because...
And I'm going to give you the...
Time's up. All right.
Thank you.
You want to say anything?
Yeah.
Okay. City manager comment?
Madam Mayor, I'm prepared to move into the session topics this evening.
All right.
With that, if I may, we have three items on the agenda this evening. The first one is our public bench art program, if you will. The Desert Fine Arts Academy has made a proposal to us. In essence, it will be doing artwork on several of the benches in our downtown. Obviously, this has many issues incumbent with it. We have asked the Arts Commission, the Parks and Recreation Commission, and I guess the Planning Commission has weighed in, and now is the time that I would like to bring it to City Council so you have an understanding of what is proposed, what our boards and commissions are recommending, and then obviously any issues that we would have. Obviously, our issues are maintenance costs and things of that nature. So what we would like to do, if in fact counsel supports this plan, either as a pilot or as a program, what we would like to do is just get some guidance and make some suggestions on the kinds of things that we would like in the agreement vis-à-vis cost, maintenance, things of that nature. And with that, I would turn it over to Mr. Bootsloff, who has been working with this program, and we'll introduce some of the speakers we have, and they have a presentation, and we will go from there. Thank you, Troy.
Thank you, Mr. Ruddy, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. As the city manager has so eloquently framed the issue, I will dispense with the formalities of the background, but I did want to point out that the Desert Arts Academy has been pursuing this project for approximately six or seven months now. It has gone through various levels of review. They're now at the point where they'd like to get counsel direction as to whether or not the council is receptive to this idea so they can either proceed with the project or not. Essentially, what is being proposed here is part of a larger campaign to raise funds by the Desert Arts, Desert Academy of the Arts, to fund their arts education program. Under this project, the Desert Academy of the Arts will use local artists and high school students to artistically paint up to 30 public benches in the Central Business District. The key components of the program, which I'm sure the individuals who are here with us tonight will outline, are essentially as follows. They'd like to have the program run from December of this year through April of next year. They only propose to use local artists, artists here in the Coachella Valley. All benches will be painted in place, so there'll be no moving of benches anywhere outside the city limits. They will also be working with the Palm Springs Unified School District in coordinating the assignment of up to three high school students with each artist to do the actual artwork itself. The Desert Academy of the Arts is looking for private sponsors for each bench, and they're asking for approximately $1,800 for each bench that will be used to, again, fund their various programs that they offer. The name of each sponsor will be included on the bench plaque along with that of the artist. The Desert Academy of the Arts will also perform routine maintenance and will repaint any bench damaged by vandalism. And finally, the Desert Arts Academy has agreed to restore all benches to their original condition at the end of the program. Tonight, joining us to give a presentation on this program is Susan and Victor Kohn. The Kohns are involved with the Desert Academy of the Arts and are here to talk about the program. I'd like to ask Susan to come up to the podium here or the microphone, and she will give the presentation from the Academy of the Arts, and I believe Victor is going to be our manual slideshow projector here, and he's going to show us the different slides that they have prepared for you this evening. Susan?
Welcome. Thank you, and thanks for allowing me to come tonight and make this presentation to you. We, I'm on the board of the Desert Academy of the Arts. It's a 501(c)(3) corporation, and its main goal is to bring art to the community and especially to the youth in this community. We will start the presentation just by giving you the examples of the test benches that were done in the middle of the summer. We were approved to do two test benches, first of all, to see if there would be any graffiti. There was none. And if they would withstand our desert conditions, they have, and they are still in good condition, and we expect them to last through the season, assuming you approve that. And these are the pictures of the two benches. One is on the 700 block of North Palm Canyon. The other, I think, is the 400 block South.
A student did this one, didn't...
Well, yes, a student did that one, yes. Yes. I believe he's 17. He's on his way to college now, but he was still in high school at the time. And with this one, we had other people who simulated what students would do, doing the jobs that students would do on the bench on the trial project of seeing how it would work when you assigned out work to the students, because the other bench was all done by the one student himself. So those were, that was our trial, and what we were trying to see is if they would hold up, and if they would have any graffiti, and they do not.
Madam Mayor?
We're talking about the microphones, the sound.
The objectives of the program were to promote tourists initially, and now, were to promote tourism in Palm Springs by creating a unique environment of art. Therefore, hopefully, we would bring tourists in the valley, no matter where they are, as far as where they stay, to Palm Springs to see our benches. Provide students an opportunity to work alongside professional artists. Create funding for the after-school arts education in the Palm Springs Unified School District, elementary school system, and to promote the talent of Palm Springs' most outstanding local artists. And what we plan to do is to enhance 30-plus current benches, and at this point, it is not 30-plus, it is 30, to be ready for the prime tourist season of January through April of 2003, as Troy has just said, and to promote the sale of the benches at the end of the showing to provide new benches for the city and funding for the Palm Springs Unified School District After-School Arts Education Program, which is provided at this point by this organization at $30 per year per child. So it is really basically free. Sorry. I got a little too close there, didn't I? Forgive me. I'll try not to breathe. Action continued. To encourage businesses and organizations to sponsor the benches, and the budget basically is the following. So if you want to see how this is divided up, the $1,800, 500 is to go for artist stipend, $1,500 for artist materials, $200 for primer and graffiti coating, $200 for reserve for restoration, and $750 for the after-school arts program. Now, you may wonder about the primer and graffiti coating. That is five coats. There are two coats of primer on every bench. There are two coats of finish coat over the finished bench, and then of lacquer, and then there's a coat of graffiti coating over that, so that there is no chance that those benches can deteriorate or peel or be damaged. At least, we haven't found it so far.
How long have the ones... Sorry.
What do we need to proceed? We need city approval. We need any necessary permits that you deem necessary. We need artist designs, and they are coming in in large numbers now. We are narrowing the numbers, so we are encouraging more artists to submit, because at this point, we're accepting only about one out of five to even submit to the Arts Commission. We need, well, actually, we have approval of, oh, we need approval of the designs by the Arts Commission, but before they go to the Arts Commission, they have to be approved by the Desert Academy of Fine Arts. And we need the sponsorships, and they're coming in. They're beginning to come in. And what are the benefits? It'll emphasize the image of Palm Springs as an artistic village and encourage tourism. It will enhance arts education for our students, but not add expenses to the city budget. It will bring art buyers and art enthusiasts to Palm Springs. And essentially, art matters. We, the Board of the Desert Academy of the Arts, a nonprofit corporation, ask for your support to help us achieve this positive program. This program benefits our city, our local businesses, tourism, our students, and our local artists. We all win. And we have a letter that was sent from one of our City Councilwomen from, to a young man who painted that bench over there, and we have a letter from the Palm Springs Bureau of Tourism, who did not want a bench in front of their place, and when it was put next door to them somewhere else, they immediately called and wanted it moved in front of their place. So that was this bench, and they sent us this letter. And I want to thank you for listening, and I'm here to answer any questions or to help in any way I can.
Ms. Oden.
Madam Mayor, would you explain to me again the approval process for the selection?
The approval process first goes to the academy, and it has to go through a group of artists and museum and gallery owners before it goes to the Public Arts Commission. Then it goes to the Public Arts Commission.
Okay, so in terms of the final selection, you don't play a role in that at all with the commission?
Right. They, as far as I know, they get final selection with, and the businesses also, the sponsors get to select as well, but if there's something the Public Arts Commission doesn't want out there, unless the business that wants it can convince them, it doesn't go, from what I understand.
Well, I was more concerned about your process and making a selection and whether or not that selection is chosen.
Whether our process...
Okay, do you submit more selections than are chosen, so they can eliminate some?
Oh, yes. Yes. We're just, what we're doing, we had, for example, we had 50, over 50 benches submitted on the first, well, for the round that chose these two, we had about 12. Two were chosen by the Public Arts Commission. Then we had about 50 submitted, this time around, to the academy from artists all over the area. 11 have been chosen to be submitted to the Public Arts Commission.
Are they site-specific? Are they looking for certain things in certain areas? Or does it matter?
No. No, it doesn't matter. Because, in these particular benches, it really doesn't matter, because one is mountainous, which would fit anywhere. One has to do with deer, with our big horn sheep. They're pretty, they fit into our area, the ones that have been chosen at this point.
Okay. Well, I appreciate this breakdown that you gave from the $1,800 sponsorship, and that actually 750 goes back into the program to assist for other programs.
To assist the actual, to the children's after-school program, yes.
Okay.
Would you explain that while we're ready on that?
Okay. The, there is no, as I understand it, there's no actual art program in the school, but there is an after-school program put on by this organization, and most of the children couldn't afford it. And so what was happening is very few, there was just a small group of children who could afford it taking the program. So they lowered the price to $30 a year, and they're basically giving scholarships to all the rest of the children, I mean, to the children over $30. So all they have to pay is $30 a year to have art classes in all the, actually, it's all the elementary schools in our districts.
Madam Mayor, I'm a little confused. Are these at the school or at your facility?
No, they're at the schools.
They're actually at the school.
They're in our public schools, yes.
And it's in the elementary?
It's at the elementary schools, yes. So this has been going on for some time, yes. And it's been through the school board, and it's at the schools, and it's at no cost to the school, the school district.
So if a child is interested in art and wants to take an art class, they can participate in this.
Right.
They don't have to pay the $30 if they can't.
Even if they cannot pay the $30, they do not have to pay...
So no one is denied.
Right. No one is denied.
This affords every child an opportunity to experience art.
An after-school art program with a competent, trained teacher.
That is paid through, paid, the teacher is paid through this program.
Right.
And the school district has nothing to do with that?
The school district gives them the, well, they don't pay anything, but they allow, they provide the facility so that the children don't have to travel.
Uh-huh.
They can do it right at school.
Okay.
Did that answer your question? Okay.
Madam Mayor, the, as far as the artists for the benches, they're not limited to the elementary school program. They're, it's open, or is it from the elementary school program?
The artists...
The artists, the actual artists that do the designs for the benches?
The artists who do the designs for the benches are limited to the Coachella Valley.
But there's no age. Okay, so it's, that's open?
That's open.
Okay.
They just have to be able to go through this rigorous process of approval.
And then I was going to ask Troy for some comments, or what comments were received from the other commissions that reviewed it.
I can either do that now, Madam Mayor, or I could wait till all the questions are exhausted, and your choice.
He's asked the question.
You're going to have to silence your mic there, Susan. Just press the button there. Okay, now that we've got the microphone situation resolved. Before I actually get into what the commissions have taken action on, I thought I would elevate to the council a concern that came out of the Arts Commission, and that is currently the city has no policy regarding the use of public property for private fundraising purposes, and that is at the core of the Desert Academy of the Arts request here, is that they want to use our public property, the street benches, for a private fundraising purpose. So as a policy issue, we thought we should at least elevate that to the council to discuss whether or not that's something we should have a policy relative to, or in this case, because there has been some precedent set with other organizations, most, the one that comes to mind most immediately is the Walk of Stars in downtown, where the city allows for the placement of the stars in the public right-of-way, whether we want to develop a policy for future use, but knowing that right now, there is no such, no such policy in place to deal with this kind of use of public property. So I thought I would raise that to the council's attention. That did come out of the Arts Commission discussion on this.
Well, I think that's an interesting question, because when we get into that, what else are we looking at? We're not just looking at benches then, if we're looking at a public policy. So that could be involved, right, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes.
In fact, in fact, when we were dealing with the Walk of Stars issue, we had significant concerns about the whole situation of, are you, in essence, auctioning off this public property? And those questions were never really fully addressed. It was a popular program, and we've continued it, but there are, those questions continue.
Madam Mayor, may I make a point? This program, however, is going to public use in our public schools, so it's not really going to private funding. I mean, it's not going to a private use. It's going to, be used in the public schools in a program that's already approved. So I'm wondering whether it really has to do with these other kinds of programs.
Well, my concern is that what if somebody wants to now paint the streetlights downtown and charge for that and for some organization? I mean, anything is possible when you open up this, you know, possibility. I'm not saying it's right or wrong. I just think it's a bigger discussion than benches.
Madam Mayor, I think it's an interesting discussion. I think it's also interesting that this discussion arises at this time. I mean, I know that they have come forward with the proposal, but we have several other organizations that we also are dealing with as well, nonprofits. So I think the policy is probably a good thing. I guess, an inventory first, I guess, would be important, of how many we're dealing with and the variety, you know, even in establishing the policy itself. Anna, I'll hold.
Well, if I may continue then, Madam Mayor, on the discussion at the commission levels. And again, this was elevated from a recent meeting of the Arts Commission where this issue came up, and so I just picked that out as a major policy concern that the council may wish to consider. As I stated, this has been reviewed by all the various commissions of the city, Arts Commission, Parks and Recreation Commission, and Planning Commission. As for the Arts Commission, they have endorsed the project, but they have added the following conditions. The project should not exceed four months in length. It should be limited to 30 benches. That color renderings of the proposed design must be presented to the Arts Commission for approval. That Desert Academy of the Arts must obtain the written approval of the proposed bench design from the businesses located closest to where the benches are going to be placed, which is what Susan had mentioned they were planning to do. That Desert Arts Academy must provide ongoing maintenance of the benches, and the city should be able to make repairs if academy or the artists fail to do so within a reasonable timeframe. And finally, that the project should be categorized as a children's art project. And Diane Morgan is present if we need to have her explain what the Arts Commission meant by a children's art project.
Yes, please.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I would like an explanation on that.
Just so that everyone would understand that children would be doing the painting, so there would be no expectations that that would be permanent and professional artwork, that it was a student's project. So if people look at children's artwork differently than they do, that might at a professional artist and maybe be a little more accepting of the way something looks.
Well, my impression was that you have an artist that's coming with a rendering, and they're going to mentor the children through the project, so, just like they did the wall at the pavilion. Is that, am I...
And the one at Desert Highland.
And the one at Desert Highland, right.
Desert Highland was very well supervised by the artist, and we just want to make sure that happens in this case, too.
Yes, yes.
And give credit to the children so that they know that it's a children's project.
Well, it gives them an opportunity, it builds their self-esteem.
Some wonderful things in those projects.
Yes.
Well, I guess my concern is that the design comes from the artist himself or herself, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Because I don't think anyone would think that the mural at Desert Highland was really done by children. I think that's something that you would have to explain because it's so beautiful. And that's kind of what I would expect would happen here. So that's why I don't quite understand why the emphasis on the children and the being more accepting.
Well, they want to make sure that everyone knows that children are painting it, too, because this is a smaller area to paint, and Richard Wyatt let the children just do some background areas and had very detailed outlines of where they were to paint and what they could paint, and they helped just do the outlines. So I think the children may be a little bit more involved in this than they were in...
in Richard's, in the actual painting part. No?
I think, I think they'll be under the direction of the artist.
Susan, you can push your mic.
Sorry. I believe they'll be under the direction of the artist. The artist will be there at all times and working with the children, and it'll be a mentoring project for the children.
Madam Mayor, one, one further point from the Arts Commission, and since Diane's here, I'll have her speak to it. They also requested that the city obtain a special release from each of the artists involved in this project. This apparently comes under the California Art Preservation Act, Civil Code Section 987, which allows, once the release is provided, the city to make changes or alterations to their artistic design. Diane, you may wish to elaborate a little bit more on why that release is necessary.
Well, the act protects the artist's work from being altered in any way by another person or destroyed, and so we need their permission to do maintenance if they're not available, and once the project's over, we need their permission to paint over them too.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
What is the reason for the four months?
Well, that was how long you wanted to do, pretty much the season, and then all of the commissions agreed that four to five months would be tough to maintain them and keep them in good condition for much longer than that, without totally repainting them.
Yeah, apparently, the maintenance cycle right now for all of our public benches is roughly three to four months where they're repainted on that kind of cycle. So four months would be consistent with the current cycle of maintenance and repainting of the downtown benches.
And, yeah, even, even though, may I speak? Even though these are doing really well, I think that was the time that we requested and to all the commissions.
I think it's important to state that, you know, that's pretty much the shelf life of a project like this, as opposed to just stating the date, because it sounds then limiting.
It had to do with the, going from film festival to the end of the season, and just having that sparkle for those few months.
You just said, Diane, you said about our having to repaint them. It says here that two hundred dollars is reserved for restoration, so it's my impression...
Well, hopefully, we don't have to.
Well, it's my impression when I read that, that that's already going to be taken care of within that eighteen hundred dollars that the sponsor is providing. Am I, right, so it's not our response, it would not be our responsibility to bring it back to the Adobe color?
It would, it would just go into the regular cycle, but it would be funded already.
Okay, okay.
I think the release is specifically for any touch-up or maintenance-related work that needs to be done, and if the city did not have the release, we could not alter the artist's design. So that, the release is important for us to have that kind of liberty to go ahead and do that maintenance work.
And I think that with the Parks and Recs, they had asked for a contract that we, that that maintenance be done, and I think that would, that's actually an easier way to do it, maybe. What do you think?
Yeah, and I'll go ahead and elaborate on the Parks and Recreation Commission's findings. Turn off your microphone there, there we go, so we don't have any feedback. They also endorsed the project with the following conditions. They felt that the project shouldn't exceed five months. Once again, we're five, four, four or five months. Again, limited to thirty benches, that the benches should not be placed immediately next to one another in the central business district, so you shouldn't have one and then right next to it have another one that's painted. They felt they should be spread out a little bit and apart from one another, so that they didn't have all of a sudden a cluster of these benches, that they were pretty much spread out throughout the central business district. That the Desert Academy of the Arts must provide ongoing maintenance, as Susan referred to, that the city should be able to make repairs if the academy or artist fails to make the repairs in a reasonable period of time, and this would all be done through an agreement that the city would have to enter into with the Desert Academy of the Arts for this program, if that's the direction of the council. And that was their final point, was that the city should have a written agreement with the Desert Academy of the Arts, stipulating the terms under which the bench art is approved, going through the Arts Commission for approval, how the benches are maintained, and how the program is administered. So those were the points that were raised by the Parks and Recreation Commission on their meeting of September eighteenth. And then lastly, Planning Commission, they met on this issue, I believe, in July? Or was it sooner than that? Don't recall the exact date, but they were generally supportive of the concept. At that time, they only had some initial information, and that they requested some additional information be brought back to them before they rendered a final decision for the city council. They also suggested that a written agreement be entered into between the city and the Desert Academy of the Arts. And so with that, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, that is the commission's actions here to date. I should also note that the Tourism Bureau and Main Street have received presentations on this project and also have given it their support. And so with that, I'd be available to answer your questions.
Thank you. Counsel?
Madam Mayor? I have a question in reference to page three in here, pertains to the action plan. In the second item, it says, promote sale of the benches at the end of the showing to provide new benches for the city and funding for the Palm Springs Unified School District After-School Arts Education Program. What are you talking about?
All right. The bench that I painted, I was, I, oh, sorry. Thanks. I, I was fortunate enough to be chosen in a hundred degrees this summer to be one of the bench painters. And the bench that I painted had lots of cracks and holes and chunks out. And I would think, if I were the city of Palm Springs, that I wouldn't want that bench back. And that if somebody wanted that bench in their backyard with painting all over it and would buy it and take it away, that I would prefer to have a new bench, because that bench is really icky underneath. So that's the thought, that some of these benches are really in bad shape. And if somehow we could sell them, some of them, and get you new benches, it would be a good trade-off. So, that's, that's all it meant. Yeah, huh?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Oden?
That's a very good trade-off. I just want to focus for a moment on the benefits, because I think they're very good. Emphasizing the image of Palm Springs as an artistic village and encourage tourism, and enhancing the arts education for students, and to bring art buyers and art enthusiasts back into the city of Palm Springs. I think those are excellent benefits. One thing that if we are going to work on a policy for the future, I would really like to make sure that something very similar, perhaps more detailed, is done, like what we have on action, on action continued on page four, where it actually shows a breakdown of what's, where the money is going, especially when we're dealing with these nonprofits. I think that's really important to know, since we are working with them so closely.
I have kind of a funny question. Next to many of these benches are trashcans, also of Adobe. Is there a possibility those could be at least color-coordinated with whatever color the bench is going to be?
Okay, I have two, I have two stories about this. Number one, the Public Arts Commission said no. Number two is, when we did move that bench, because I'm an old lady and I don't, I can't paint in a hundred and ten degrees, and it was summer, and our, the other benches for this program are going to be painted in nice weather, and it's not even an issue anymore. But, so we did move this one bench. And so when we put the bench back in front of the Thai restaurant, the owner of the restaurant came out and said, "Oh, it's so beautiful. Could you take my trashcan tomorrow and paint it?"
Well, frankly, they're going to look funny, you know, if they're sitting next to each other.
Because of the terracotta, I don't think they'll look funny, because there'll be terracotta benches and trashcans still on, on the street, because we're going to, we have eighty benches and we have eighty terracotta trash things. And yes, it would be wonderful, but I don't think it's going to happen this year. But it's a good point. I think it's a great point.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Mills?
The, on page two at the bottom, on program objectives, you note, it says, promote the talent of Palm Springs' most outstanding local artists, yet you said the artists will be from the Coachella Valley, so...
Well, I'll tell you, if we have enough here in Palm Springs to measure up to the standards, which are very, very high, it'll be great. And I think we're going to have to go to Coachella Valley to, to get the quantity that we need. It's, I'm sorry to say that, but I think for this year, we're going to have to really spread it out over the valley. But yes, maybe next year, we'll be, so have so many people wanting to be in Palm Springs and be artists, and we'll have such a great environment, we'll be able to get them all from here. I'd love that.
Anything else? Counsel, what direction should we give here?
Well, I guess we need to find out whether we can do this without a policy in place, and if we can, then I would say go ahead and bring it, whatever needs to be brought back to us. If somehow we need to have a policy in place before we do this, this could be a problem.
Madam Mayor, I would suggest, if I may, that, I believe administratively, we could do this, both in terms of a, a policy that will govern our future actions in this regard, and secondly, to actually implement. My purpose in bringing it here to you is because, as you know, art is somewhat subjective, and I remember in my younger years, my grandmother, when I would give my opinion on art, many times she would tell me that apparently all my taste was in my mouth. So before I could sign off administratively on this, I felt the commissions needed to take a look at it, and I wanted to inform counsel. If you were all right, then we would go ahead and, and implement this administratively. Thank you.
Okay. Sounds good. All right. I like it. I think it's, it's, it's the Chicago Cal program, you know? There you go, same thing. All right, so you have your direction? Okay. Thank you. Thank you for coming down and giving us this presentation. All right. The next issue.
Madam Mayor, members of council, this next issue, which is listed as Protected Permissive Left Turns, I'm, I'm very excited to bring this to the policy agenda. I've been working on this issue for some time along with staff, and our staff has risen to the occasion on this particular issue, and we are now ready to move into the 21st century, if you will, in terms of our traffic signals. This is an issue that I believe will have a lot of important effects for the community. It does a couple of things. And first, I'm going to give you just a very brief background and frame the issue in this way. Our traffic signals, there's two issues. One, synchronization, do they work in conjunction, in concert, in sync, as they're supposed to? That's the one issue. And second of all, many times currently, our system now is, you come to an intersection, you have a green arrow. If you don't make the green arrow, you have to stop and wait for the next cycle. Many times, there's no oncoming traffic, and you could safely make that left turn. Most cities in the country have that kind of process. We believe, and we have identified some eighteen traffic intersections, signals in our city that would lend themselves to that kind of permissive left turn. Some signals, obviously, for safety reasons, we probably would not want to. Many, we can. So what we're going to present to you this evening is our Protected Permissive Left Turn Program. And if you agree, we will move forward. By way of update, on the synchronization, you have approved in the past, programs that we have started on synchronization, I will just update you because they tie into this. On Indian Avenue, Palm Canyon, and Ramon is being handled by Seavag using federal funds. They've had some problems with the contractor. They have a new contractor. They're continuing their process. With regards to Sunrise and Takwitz, you approved that previously. We are doing those with both federal funds and with state gas tax funds. Takwitz work began last week. Sunrise is ready to go out to bid. Finally, next week on your city council agenda, you will see a contract so we can repair our loops, what they call the loop timing structures within our systems currently, that will help and modify and actually complement what the synchronization will do. That being said, it brings us to the permissive protected left turn. So, with that, I'm going to ask David Barakian and Richard Jenkins from Traffic Engineering to explain to you the program. First, I would just note, what you have before you is the identified eighteen intersections. The first seven are the ones that you have budgeted in this current year budget. It is both gas tax and Measure A tax. It is not general fund dollars. You have budgeted in there, and we are ready to go forward with these projects. Each intersection has a different cost. Some are more involved than others. I would just note one thing, you see number three there, Feral Drive and Baristo. That requires, because of the high school, some more extensive road work on the intersection in terms of turn lanes. That is a different money we've budgeted. We're going forward, we figured it may as well be a good time to do the permissive protective at that time. And then finally, you see El Cielo and Takwitz at a hundred and thirty thousand. That is federal funds, because that, in essence, is actually putting in a brand-new light at the airport. So again, those are the extremes. Most of these, as you see, cost roughly about ten thousand dollars for the conversion, and those are, again, are with gas tax and Measure A. Now, for even more exciting details, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Barakian and Mr. Jenkins, and they will finish the completion. And we will have for the audience at home, the graphs that are behind me, you will see them on the TV screen as well. Thank you. David?
Thank you. Before we get into the, the details of what's on the list here, I wanted to briefly explain that the proposed solution, this Protected Permissive Signal Phasing, is most easily explained by a video that we have. It's less than five minutes, and it explains what that conversion would involve and has, and can do better than I could do explaining it. So I'd like that to be run first, and then we'll talk about, and get some, hopefully some direction from council as to proceeding with this program. So if Mr. DeMille can run the video?
There's a new signal design hitting the streets. The new design will reduce the amount of time traffic sits at traffic signals waiting to turn left. The new design is called Permissive Protected Left Turn. In the past, drivers were used to seeing only two kinds of left turn signals. Permissive left turn, which allows drivers to turn in between oncoming traffic, and protected left turn, which gives a dedicated period of time for the left turn traffic by displaying an arrow. A permissive left turn doesn't provide protection from oncoming traffic. When traffic is heavy, it may become difficult to safely make left turns, and cars are forced to sit and wait. A protected left turn allows for protection from oncoming traffic by providing a separate time for traffic turning left. This is good during periods of heavy traffic, but wastes time when traffic is light. Cities have seen the need to allow traffic signals to be smart enough to know when to protect drivers and when to allow them to turn in a permissive mode. To do this, cities are using signals with permissive protected left turn movements. So how do you know when a signal is using protected left turns? On the signal's mast arm over the street, and on the far-left corner of the intersection, there are signal heads with five lights on them instead of just three. There is a green arrow, a yellow arrow, a green ball, a yellow ball, and a red ball. Here's how you properly use a permissive protected left turn signal. When the green ball is lit, the driver may turn left, but must yield to oncoming traffic. After the green ball goes out, the yellow ball may be displayed. This tells the driver the signal is going to turn red. Or the signal may display the green arrow after the green ball. If the green arrow is displayed, the driver knows the signal is dedicating special time for him to turn. This is called a protected phase. Once the protected phase is over, the arrow will go out, and the yellow arrow will be displayed. This tells the driver to clear the intersection. The signal will not display a left arrow unless there are several cars in the left turn lane waiting to turn left. If there aren't enough cars for the arrow to be displayed, the signal will cycle through the circular lights. The sign next to the signal head on the mast arm reminds the driver that this is a special signal, and drivers must pay close attention to what the signal is telling them to do. Permissive protected left turn signals won't be used at every intersection. Some intersections are either too wide, or traffic is moving too fast to allow for the permissive left turn phase. Or there may not be enough left turns to warrant a protected phase. The city of Palm Springs Traffic Management Center is planning on using this type of left turn signal more and more. Watch for them and help other drivers learn how to use them. If you would like more information on this, or any traffic issue in the city of Palm Springs, please feel free to contact us. The city of Palm Springs Traffic Management Center is dedicated to the safety of the The City of Palm Springs Traffic Management Center is dedicated to the safety and efficiency of the Palm Springs Transportation Network.
Recognize the narrator?
I do.
Recognize the music?
That was me on guitar. The, you may have noticed that in the video, some of those pictures taken at Racket Club and Sunrise, we have put these in on some of our new signals where left turn, totally protected left turns weren't warranted, and yet traffic was light enough so that we didn't want to cause unnecessary delay. The proposal that we're asking for direction on tonight, though, is to switch over a number of our current signals that have been left turn protected for a number of years. And that's what's on the list that's in front of you. What that would involve is what showed on the video, changing the heads with the arrows on them into the larger head that's shown in the upper-middle photo there, or photo, the upper-middle drawing there. And along with it goes a little sign that kind of explains to the driver, you got to yield to oncoming traffic when there's a green ball shown. It certainly saves on unnecessary delay if traffic is light and there's no oncoming in the opposite direction. But traffic does have to pay attention to the fact that it has to yield to oncoming Now, we have a number of intersections in the city that don't quite meet the warrants for protected left turns, yet they have been installed over the years, as has occurred in a lot of areas in Southern California. And this program follows some guidelines that Orange County has adopted with respect to protected permissive left turns. So we're not just blindly tearing them all out, or proposing to tear them all out, but we are following some guidelines that are basically based on safety and traffic volumes. The number of intersections that are on the list there exceeds the amount that we have budgeted funds to accomplish, so that if counsel is in favor of proceeding along these lines, it would have to be divided into phases. The first group, basically down to El Cielo and Takwitz, are, those modifications are in the current year budget, gas tax and Measure A. The remainder would have to be budgeted in the gas tax and Measure A budgets in future years. I'd be happy, and Richard would be happy, to answer any questions you may have on the proposal.
Counsel?
Madam Mayor, I guess my only concern is educating the public. Because the few that we have out there now, people sit there wondering what the heck they're supposed to do. Are they supposed to turn, or they're not supposed to turn? And it can be a little confusing, you know? Because you kind of wonder, why do you have this extra green light to turn left if it's not an arrow to turn left? I mean, why can't you just use the other light to turn left? So it gets, you know, I would suggest we run this video on Channel 17.
That was...
Over and over again.
And Counsel Member Hodges, I would note that we have had those discussions, and besides, on the legal side, that we're in fine shape there. You know, every driver, if not by instinct, by training and by motor vehicle standards, always must yield before turning left. So in theory, the permissive was an extra layer on top of that. If that goes away, you're always having to turn yield, almost as if, if a light is out at an intersection, you treat it as a four-way stop. So that's what we're relying on. But again, we would agree with you on the education campaign, and we will make sure that this video runs often.
Something else we did to that end is, and one of the reasons why we did this video, is Farrell and Baristo is one of those intersections which are slated to have this done. And we have all those brand-new drivers over at the high school who aren't being taught what this means. So we've already been dialoguing with the high school to be able to bring this video in and show it on their closed-circuit TV system and be available and answer questions to them. We've also learned some lessons through Orange County's program and stuff that we've done on head placement that will make it more unique when a driver approaches the intersection so they'll see that there is something different. The ones we constructed now, the five-section head that's on the mast arm, is actually out on the end of the mast arm over the left turn lane. And we've realized that drivers have a tendency to see green, but not a shape. And so when it's over that left turn head, there is a possibility of an assumption that it's an arrow. So what we've done in these designs is moved it back away from the end of the mast arm. And the same thing on the far right in the permissive mode, if we were to remove a left turn head, rather than just changing the shape of the light, that left turn head would go away, and you'd see that mast arm sticking out there with a sign on the end of it rather than a signal head. So we've taken steps to try to catch drivers' attention when they approach the intersection to see that they got to pay attention to what they're doing when they enter the intersection.
Okay. Anything else?
Yes, I think we should also look at using our PR department to get out as much information as possible also.
Okay. So the direction we're going to give tonight is that we will move ahead with this, the suggested ones for this year and the future? Okay?
Great, thank you.
That's the direction. All right.
Madam Mayor, members of counsel, the next and final issue for this evening is the Mesquite Avenue Improvement. I'm talking, we're talking about here this evening, the portion of Mesquite by Demuth Park, which, as you know, has those dips in the road at the intersection. I'm sure every citizen in the city, at one point or another, has encountered those dips. What I would just like to note is that we have the funds, and we have been through the process, that those dips are to be corrected through the drainage repair. That's already slated to take place. What we have wanted to do as an added feature, amenity, and improvement for both traffic calming in that neighborhood, which has been an issue, and for additional parking at Demuth Park, we have a design that we would like to share with you today, and if we can get your approval, we will move forward. Again, this is gas tax and Measure A tax. It will require you to do a general plan amendment, because Mesquite, as it is, is what's in the general plan. This would require a modification. So David Barakian, again, has a design to show you. It creates a traffic calming for the neighborhood. It creates a frontage road with parking for the park. And with that, there's some design issues, and it's been through several commissions. And with that, Mr. Barakian can give you the details. Thank you.
He can play the guitar.
Does it work?
This bottom series of drawings here represents Mesquite Avenue from El Cielo to Vella Road. This proposal is a change to the designation of Mesquite Avenue. As it currently exists in the city's general plan, it's a secondary thoroughfare consisting of 64 feet wide and two lanes in each direction. That's how the general plan has it, through this whole area. Now, in conjunction with requests from the homeowners in the area, all the residents, and several planning commission meetings have resulted in a proposal to change the designation of Mesquite Avenue from a four-lane roadway adjacent to the Demuth Park and the residential area here. The Planning Commission has approved on the idea that's depicted here, and the Parks and Recreation Commission has also given their approval. And the residents have, at least at the homeowners' neighborhood meetings, have unanimously agreed with this design, which, again, is a change from the general plan. What it consists of is the through traffic on Mesquite Avenue will be on the north side of a planted area. It's sort of like a median, which will separate the through traffic, one lane in each direction, from a one-way frontage road, parallel parking road adjacent to the park. The theory among the planning commissioners was that having a higher-speed four-lane roadway adjacent to the park, if balls come out, the kids come out, right into traffic, is not a good thing, safety-wise. But that limiting it to a relatively low-speed parking area, separated by landscaping between the actual through movement area of the roadway, while still maintaining what the residents desired, which was access to their driveways from both directions, was something that drew the approval of all the people that looked at this. In addition to the changes planned, there were two areas where we're proposing some traffic calming in terms of a raised crosswalk. This is where the youth center is, bus stops here, a number of children cross here that have been observed. Also down by the main park entrance, a raised crosswalk throughout the area, some pop-outs that also include planters, which serve to slow the traffic down. And sort of an entrance statement at Vella Road, which will include a right turn lane that basically directs traffic up toward the airport, and only one lane going through on Mesquite Avenue. Mesquite Avenue, just by way of information, is currently up around 10,000 cars a day, which, interestingly enough, is what SEVAG projected for, I think, 2010. We're already there. So that's a lot of traffic, and, you know, from the city's standpoint, a secondary thoroughfare is what's supposed to carry traffic. Reducing it to a two-lane roadway, as traffic continues to grow, people will either, A, find another way to go, or B, drive slower. This design will slow the traffic down. Currently, there's a 35 mile-per-hour speed limit on Mesquite. The statistics indicate traffic, 80% of the traffic, or 85% of the traffic, is driving at 35 miles an hour. But part of that, I think, is the condition of the road and the dips that are there. This project is proposed to use drainage funds to also put the master-planned storm drain in and get rid of the dips and the constant maintenance that has had to been expended, especially here at Vella Road. That's a suspension grabber. But, so as I said, that's the proposal that has drawn the approval of the Planning Commission and Parks and Recreation Commission and the neighborhoods. And it does, or it would involve a general plan amendment, because that is a change to the designation of the roadway. And traffic would probably peak out a little bit above what it is now. It can't really take much more traffic, which would mean traffic would then go up to probably Ramon, maybe Sunny Dunes a little bit. So that is something that would have to be considered as well. But overall, we're pleased with the solution that we came up with, and it does address the residents' concerns, and we would be happy to undertake any questions or comments you may have.
Counsel?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
David, how many additional parking spaces does that add to the park?
I actually didn't count them all, but you aren't supposed to park on the south side of the street right now, but people do. And now it would become legal to park there, so, I don't know, there's probably 25, 30 spaces there.
Was there a consideration to put in diagonal? I know you'd be coming across what's the property line, but you could sure get a lot more cars in there.
The, that was looked at, but you would have to cut much farther into the park to do that. And I don't know if you recall, there's some large power poles that are right on the edge of the park there. And unless, this only widens into the park, probably a maximum of 15 feet, in most cases, much less than that, which was the general plan width of the roadway. In order to get diagonal parking, we'd have to widen more than that, and then those are large power poles, and that probably couldn't be accomplished.
My thought is, one, for increasing the parking, and, two, for the actual use of people driving down there with a one lane with no ability to pass the guy who's trying to parallel park there. And the disaster, it could back up on soccer days, it could back up out into the other intersection, and it could be pretty ugly. It could be, as long as it takes some people to parallel park. That's a concern I would have. I certainly like the concept, and that, you know, and maybe, and I certainly understand what you're talking about, the power poles, I also understand what you're talking about, losing part of the park, because, so you are encroaching 15 feet beyond the existing curb now?
Well, in just a couple of places, because the existing edge of pavement on the park side goes in and out in various places. The most is about 15 feet. In most places, it's much less. It's only about five feet or so into the park.
Okay. Because, you know, the parallel space is eight, you know, feet, a diagonal 45-degree angle, it's probably 18, maybe 16, I think, deep on a 45. So it would definitely go in more, but I can really see that as a backup problem on soccer day. Then you're backed up in Mesquite, which is already one lane only each way, and then you really created a problem. So I think that would bear some looking at. The other comment that you mentioned that concerned me was, you know, is downgrading the street. And I'm assuming you're talking about downgrading from Vella to El Cielo? Or are you talking about all the way over to Gene Autry on the downsizing?
Well, what we're proposing is from Vella, and it needn't go all the way to El Cielo, because this part's already built. And the proposal is only changing, basically, from the youth center.
But my thought would be, if we're going to change it on the general plan, then why not change it everywhere it needs to be changed, which to me would mean all the way over to Palm Canyon? Because, I mean, there's no reason for that street. It doesn't go anywhere, and it's never gonna, it's never gonna align. It's an 88-foot street now. I mean, if we're going to change it, why not change it so it makes sense? You know, instead of changing out a section of it. Even though I understand fully that those curbs are in there, and, you know, maybe nothing will ever change, but at least the general plan would make sense. But, and the other thing, David, was you mentioned that downsizing this to fewer lanes would also potentially increase traffic on Ramon, which can certainly handle it, but you mentioned Sunny Dunes, which is a worse condition than Mesquite is. And that is a concern. I know, I go back, and I'm certainly, I understand the proposal, and I'm in favor in some ways and not in others, and the idea of what you're doing certainly makes sense. I go back to when this track was originally approved. I mean, I was there when this thing was approved, and the comments were, you know, you're up secondary, you're 88 feet, you're putting houses on there, we made them do driveways in certain ways so they weren't backing out, you know, this is what you are buying, and this is what you're going to be living with. And, you know, that's the way it is. Now, 20 years later, we're coming back and solving a problem for residents that were, I mean, essentially knew what they were getting into at the time. So, I mean, that's another aspect of it. And, you know, it's worth talking about anyway. And, uh, you know, it's worth talking about anyway, so.
Well, certainly, the dips at Vella, uh, something that needs to be dealt with. We talked about that before.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Well, the dips are what keep the traffic slowed down, though. And if you take the dips away, it'll probably be, you know, even faster. Um, I have to tell you, I don't like this at all. First of all, I don't like frontage roads. And, of course, famous medians. But even aside from that, it kind of is interesting to me that, um, I think every city in the Coachella Valley is looking to move traffic faster, move traffic more efficiently. And they're widening their roads, they're increasing the capacity to move people along. We're eliminating the capacity. I'm not saying it shouldn't slow down. I think it should, under the circumstances of what we have there. But I don't necessarily think it's the right thing to do. If we're already at the capacity of 2010, what are we gonna be at 2010? And I, I don't know. I, I don't care for this at all.
Madam Mayor? Did you say this was a secondary thoroughfare or collector?
It's a secondary thoroughfare.
Okay, and this feeds right into the Mid Valley Parkway, which we knew was going to happen.
Yes.
I, I am concerned primarily about, um, the traffic congestion that that's going to create with people then trying to cut through the residential neighborhood more, and especially through the Sunny Dunes area, which is... I, I, I don't really see this as an answer. I think it's, it'll look nice, but I think it's gonna create more problems for us as a community and as a city in the long run.
Interestingly, the project started, um, and was budgeted as a, to, to take care of the dips, repair the pavement, and put the, the master plan, or general plan roadway in. And, uh, when the neighborhood meetings occurred, that's how this evolved. And, uh, so it started to be exactly what, uh, what several of the council people have just, have just mentioned.
Well, I don't think I would have a problem if you were talking about doing some calming. If you were doing some, some jet-outs, you know, like we're doing in some of the other areas, which slow the traffic down. I mean, I don't have a problem slowing traffic down there, because I think that's important.
I agree.
But I don't think that you need to narrow the street. I don't think you need to do many of these other things that are really gonna inhibit, uh, and impact the entire neighborhood down there, and not in a beneficial way, I don't think.
Also, in the parking area, is there enough room for a passing lane there as well? I couldn't tell.
Yes, the, the, the proposal here has, uh, paral- parallel parking, uh, with a through lane only in the eastbound direction, adjacent to the park. And the reason for that was the residents wanted this, as I said, the separation between the through traffic and the, uh, the park traffic and the, and the kids going, uh, on soccer day and, uh, and so forth, and wanting to make legal parking instead of illegal parking. So that's how that evolved.
If I could make a suggestion, this is what the real purpose of the study session is, to, to get this debate going, so we can hear your issues. What I would like to do is, uh, obviously, go back to take a look, revisit some of the issues, look at what you raised today, and come back perhaps with another version, an iteration of what potentially could be. David, uh, could we talk a little bit about time schedules and some other options?
We could, we've been through, oh, four or five, uh, versions of this through the planning commission and, uh, the, the neighborhood meetings. We could certainly take, uh, the council people's input and, uh, see if we can do a combination of some traffic calming without, uh, losing so much capacity on the roadway. I would certainly be in favor of that.
Potentially taking more of the park for, sort of, parallel parking?
Well, as I said, that may not be totally possible to have diagonal parking, as Mr. Mills was, was asking. But we could certainly look at some, some aspects of traffic calming and, uh, pop-outs and so forth, and, and still, uh, try to maintain the, the vehicle capacity of the roadway. But, uh, I don't think the separate, the, the, necessarily, the median would be able to stay, which doesn't seem like to be a major, uh, a major loss to some of you. But I think we would be wise to re-report that back to the, uh, the neighborhood.
Madam Mayor? I would, I, I would, uh, as Dana suggested, I would be in favor of traffic calming way, ideas as well. Especially, you know, we, we, we looked at the, the, the different ways that you have suggested in your, in your manual about how to do it. And a lot of those ways look like they could potentially work here, uh, particularly at the intersections that we have. I mean, that would be an ideal place to, uh, to do it. I mean, I would certainly like to, to do some re, some, some parking relief for the, for the park. Um, but maybe that ends up being, uh, paving the parking lot over by three and eight, or eight, seven and eight, and, um, uh, maybe some other, uh, possibilities. But, um, I'd like to look at some other alternatives, as the city manager suggested.
You're hearing the direction? Anything else?
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Bracken?
Uh, no.
Okay, thank you. And that concludes our study session for this evening, and the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.